Yep, it's nine o'clock, I think. I'd like to start the meeting here with the, this is the Crow Wing County Committee of the whole meeting. We only have one item on the agenda, and that is the Emily Manganese Mining leases. There's a couple of questions I would like to ask of the board. I don't know if we've had anybody fill out anything that they would like to speak, but we do have some people in the audience, and I would like to wait until they're done with their presentation, and if those people would like to speak, if that's okay with the board, I just want to get ahead and count. Okay. So I think this is, take it off.
I actually have to do roll?
Oh, excuse me, I forgot. We need roll call.
Commissioner Coring?
I'm here.
Commissioner Lubke?
Here.
Commissioner Barrows?
Here.
Commissioner Franzine?
Here.
Commissioner Hoag?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we also have friends from Emily online as well, listening in. I see Mayor Jones, and I think Kerry Johnson was up there as well.
Okay, thank you. And they can speak whenever they can raise their hand. When we're done with our presentation, then allow anybody who would like to address the board to do that.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Okay, you may start.
Commissioners and other participants, thank you very much. My name is Rick Sandry. I'm a Director of Electric Metals USA Limited and North Star Manganese, Inc., and we are the company that is applying for the state leases, 720 acres up in the Emily District. And to my right?
Greg Fontaine from Hush Blackwell. I'm outside counsel for Electric Metals and North Star Manganese.
And today, we'd like to basically present some information to you on our application for the 720 acres. We have some slide charts, and we apologize, we did not have them electronically for the meeting. Hopefully, you've been able to put them on the system so that when we call them up, you can show them, and we can talk about them. North Star Manganese was organized a number of years ago to explore and potentially develop manganese deposits up in the Emily District. And we centered on the properties that were owned initially by Crow Wing Power, which the two divisions were CMR Cooperative Mineral Resources and People's Security. And we obtained some leases on their properties, did some initial due diligence with that, and then have expanded from there in terms of acquiring some other ground via lease in the Emily District. And the first item I would show you is, happens to be on the chart, down on the upper right-hand side of this table. It is the one, you want to pick it up, Greg? It might be easier, to be honest. Showing what we're talking about here is in a two-square-mile area immediately adjacent to the town of Emily. It's, Emily is here, it's approximately two miles up. The sections 20 and 21 are the areas that we are interested in, in the state and in that district. We acquired lands via lease from Crow Wing Power, and subsequently, we have acquired lands from other parties in the immediate area. And those lands now combine into this block that we have here marked in yellow. That is our land holding. It is 100 percent private lands, and it is leased for long-term leases with the various parties. On the lands itself, we do have operational facilities that were built by Crow Wing Power. Back in this slide here, sorry, we're playing card games, you know.
Nice job, Greg.
But that facility was built by Crow Wing Power when they were attempting to test the manganese in the area. And as such, we've taken over that facility and are using it for our exploration. To date, we have spent well over $10 million in numerous areas of business on the property and other activities, and at least $4 million in drilling this year. We have, we put down 29 holes into the property area this year. We have not drilled that all of the property. We have discovered manganese that goes, that was identified by US Steel and Pickens Mather in the 1940s and 50s. And it is, the yellow dots here are the new drilling areas that we've drilled, and I'll walk this up to the table and show you some manganese that we have actually extracted in one of our holes. I would suggest you keep it in a bag, not that it's dangerous or anything else, it's just that, if you all recall the pictures of the Neanderthal cave dwellings that they found in France and Spain, almost every one of the markings on the cave dwellings is manganese markings. It is used as a paint maker, and if you get it on your hands, you will probably need to go wash your hands. So I've got it in the plastic right now.
While you're doing that, Rick, do you actually own the property or just the mineral rights of the property? I'm just gonna, I'm gonna be asking questions all the time.
Absolutely. We actually own neither. What we own is the rights and operation of the project. The actual property title that we have right now are owned by Crow Wing Power and two other property owners. They own their properties. We have long-term leases for exploration and extraction of this material, if it ever gets to that stage. And with that, right, we have the right to explore, subject to permits from the state, and if we ever got any further along the line, we could go to some kind of development and operation. The entire vision that we have is to put together a comprehensive package to be able to explore and possibly develop a manganese mining operation up in this district. And with that, we think that today, we are actually sitting on at least 80 to 90 percent of the mineral block. It is not as big as anything you see in the Masabi or even some of the mining operations historically in the Cayuna. This is a very small, high-grade deposit, and it would cover a small footprint from a mining operation. What we have, this chart over here shows the stratigraphy of the drilling that we've done, and in the drilling, coming down from the surface directly into the deposition, you can see the brown lines here. Those are the manganese lenses, with iron lenses that we've intercepted. Some of those could be economic in the future, some of those won't be economic in anybody's lifetime at these tables. The rest of the material is barren from what we're looking for, and the mineralization that we are intercepting is basically silica first, iron second, manganese third, and a pinch of clay. So we're not dealing with other materials that you see for other places in Minnesota, like the copper nickel operations. This is a Cayuna-type manganese iron operation that happens to have a lot of manganese. And in fact, the mineral term that this is, this is manganiferous iron ore. So it's an iron ore that's got too much manganese, and in fact, that's one of the reasons why it was never mined, is that US Steel and a few of the other companies said, "We don't know what to do with all this manganese. It won't make good, regular steel." And it was left in the ground. So where we're sitting today is, we've applied, almost three years ago, we put in applications with the state to get mineral leases to expand the footprint area in and around our property. The main reason we're looking for that is not for mineral exploration. It is part of the entire overall development of a mining project. Think about it, this building here, the building has a specific footprint, but it also includes parking lots, access routes, entry and exit areas. You need all of those things to go with a mining operation. And part of that ground is also buffer ground, to make sure that we don't infringe upon the local neighbors. So the reason we're asking for the land from the state is to allow us to basically use some of that for infrastructure purposes. There will be a little bit of exploration, but not much, partially for, to make sure that it's, mineral isn't not where we think it is, or is where we think it should be. But most of it, we basically won't touch, and that's the reason we're looking for the excess acreage, in our case. I mean, it's not like hundreds of thousands of acres, it's 720 acres. And that is shown in this slide here. And the different colors represent a few different types of property we have. Again, our property block is basically in here that we have. We also have some of the other ground, as you can see in that other slide down over in here. Part of this ground is limited to us. We currently have, through our leases, the manganese rights on some of these properties in here. However, the state retained in its earlier, I mean, years ago, decisions on land acquisition and development, retained the iron and coal rights. Well, there's no coal on the property, but they do have the iron rights, which means that we are not allowed to explore or advance any manganese development on lands we have the manganese of, unless we get the leases from the state as well.
Let me interrupt for one second, but to be clear, we are not seeking this white property here.
That is correct. We're not seeking that white property at this point in time.
Is it privately owned, or is that who's?
The state owns three-fifths of that, and the other two-fifths are owned by other individuals.
Undivided interest in it?
Yeah, and we need to be able to come to agreement with all parties, and we haven't been able to do so, and therefore, we have dropped it from all requests until the time that we get there.
And the county owns no property in that area, correct?
There is tax forfeit property involved, and can you bring that map back up and show which ones are the ones that you have the leases on, and which ones are the ones that you will be seeking the lease rights?
The leases we have are this U-shaped, plus some additional land here, over here.
Yeah, this block, this block, and this block.
But as Rick was saying, the state has a reserved interest, so we cannot use those lands, and without having the--
That one is not ours, because it's not tax forfeited property, if the state has reserved mineral interests, but we don't have any interest in that. We manage tax forfeited property for the state. Those are the ones we're interested in.
Right, and we understand that most of the acreage, it's, the state records are not always crystal clear, but our understanding is that most of the lands in the state leases are tax forfeit, and thus, 80 percent of the rent, and then ultimately, the royalties will go to the county, the city, and the school district.
Are all the tax forfeited properties undivided interests?
No, there is one dealing with a gravel pit at the surface. Our understanding is that that surface is not just a lease on the gravel pit. We understand from the owner that he says that he owns it, and we have not independently conducted our own title search. What we have done to date, on almost every one of the pieces up there, every one we're interested in, we actually have had to go back and conduct title reviews, and in a couple of cases, we've provided that information back to the state so the state could correct their records, because they were claiming ground that they owned, and it turned out that they actually didn't even own it at all.
This map is DNR's map, so as Rick said, we have to, we need to firm up, to make certain what DNR has told us is correct, but we are, we are comfortable that DNR is correct, that most of the land is tax forfeit, that is subject to the state lease.
Well, the light green is this, where you have the state's interest in iron and coal, and you need leases for manganese there. The, oh geez, what color is that? A different green is the state, those are tax forfeited properties, and you need leases on those.
That's correct.
And those are 100 percent tax forfeited, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, the other ones are undivided interests.
That's correct.
Okay. That make sense to you guys?
Yes, one question, Administrator Hoel. So in the case where we do have tax forfeited lands that are under the county, you know, do we have the mineral rights of those tax forfeited lands? I know we manage the forest on top of those.
It can vary. You know, you could have sold the mineral rights previously, and especially in mining country, it is not uncommon to have mineral rights severed from the ownership of the property. So I would say that it is, it's not uncommon to have that be the case.
So we could actually have it as tax forfeited land, but not actually have the mineral rights underneath it?
Yes, it is possible. Typically, the state gets the mineral rights with the forfeiture, usually.
Okay, okay.
And even, just to clarify, I have to follow up on that, the rent that we will pay to DNR is the same, whether you have the mineral rights.
Okay.
Now, the royalties would be different. When royalties are paid, that goes to the mineral owners, but the initial rent payments, that's for whatever the state holds, or whatever is tax forfeit.
Yes, so if the state owns both, or holds both the surface and the mineral, versus probably the leased holding, which is just the iron right, we still pay the same amount?
Yeah. You can further divide the mineral rights into the type of mineral.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yes, you can.
Okay.
And that's what we're basically asking for, and Greg, you were going to talk about the time chart a little bit?
If, we just wanted to emphasize that we're here in the process, seeking leases, and we've done some original exploration. So you see the arrow up there. The permitting, which is a colored line, so I'm not even going to guess on the environmental review, the permitting, that is a multiple-year process involving multiple state agencies and potentially federal agencies, the city, the county. There's likely 20 to 25 permits, and the permitting is preceded by an environmental review process. You're probably familiar with EAWs and EISs. Each of those processes has opportunities for public comment at the draft stages, and then at the final stages, several of the permits have the EPA involved, so it's a complicated process that typically takes multiple years. It's hard to guess, but you know, it might, two to three years on environmental review with multiple opportunities for public comment and input by the county, then another two to three years for permitting, hence, the whole process tends to be four to six, but those are just guesses, and we are, we have not even filed any applications. We're not asking for anything from the county, or the city, or anybody with respect to the project itself, the mine itself, or importantly, the processing facilities, which we haven't even talked about, why manganese is important here. That's all ahead of us. Plenty of opportunity for public input. This is just asking about, do you support, and we hope you do support, our application to the DNR for the state leases?
I wanted to add one more thing in terms of the reason we're looking for this, besides the fact that it's a unique opportunity, and it is extremely difficult to find high-grade mineralization anywhere in the world. I've been in the industry over 50 years, and it's, it is not easy to find high-grade material, and this is what we have here in terms of the manganese. The other reason that we're looking at this is, at this time, is that the market has shifted, the economy has shifted, and global issues have shifted. And today, whether you're pro or anti-green energy or not, the world is moving toward the end, where we're using more lithium batteries and electric vehicles, and developments along those lines. And of the batteries that are being produced today, and the ones that are anticipated to be produced for the next 30 to 40 years, right now, in excess of about 60 to 70 percent have a major manganese component. The United States is 100 percent dependent upon imported manganese. We've been import dependence since 1970. So we're getting it from Africa, we're getting it from Australia. Unfortunately, we're getting the advanced chemicals that go into battery manufacturing from basically one source, and that's China. And we believe that we could be an interesting, if not significant, producer in the future. This is what's led us to the exploration and development of this project. You know, time will tell whether we, it comes economic and viable, but that is our driving factor, to be able to participate in that marketplace and utilize this material.
Mr. Chair, quick question. On the timeline, say, the environmental part, what, are we looking at years here, or what are we looking at?
Well, we didn't put years up there simply because we don't know how long it's going to take. And as you all know, because you live here in Minnesota, as do I, some of the projects that people have been proposing from the early 2000s, especially in the northeast Minnesota, some of the mining projects are still in proposal stage and in permitting stage. So is it three years, five years, 10 years, longer? That's why we couldn't put that up there. Some of the technical work, we probably could estimate, but at this point, we're concentrating our effort on really the first two things up there, land acquisition and leasing, and exploration and geology. We really want to find out if there's sufficient information, you know, if we can, you know, acquire the appropriate lands through leases or other means, in some cases, maybe some purchases, but acquire the lands and as well, explore for it. If we believe we have sufficient, high enough grades and tonnage, then we'll proceed down those next steps. If we fail at that stage, well, then we're failing with only maybe 10, or 12, or 15 million dollars spent versus 40, 50, or 60 million spent. So it's a progressive spend on our side, and I don't mean to evade your question, but some of those things fall in place when you are sure that you've got other things in place.
But we can say with certainty, the environmental review and permitting process takes several years, and we probably have minimum a year or two before the decision is made whether to even start the environmental review and permitting process. Is that, so years, yes?
We technically do not know if we have a project yet. We know there's mineral. That's a good start, but we don't know if we have a project yet.
Okay.
But--
It's, it's just to look at that and call it a timeline, it's a kind of a challenge when we don't know what we're measuring.
Fully agree.
I'm assuming it'll be years, but it, just to get a, kind of a feel for what we're talking, till the project closure and reclamation, I mean, is, that doesn't mean nothing to us right now, because--
And we don't have any of that information, and we couldn't, we couldn't even hazard a guess. What can say for sure is, since in front of us, we have a, as Rick was saying, we have a year or two of technical work before we even kick off permitting. And then, the permitting is complicated, but again, I could tell you, a best-case scenario very likely would be three years, and it's much more realistic to say it's five years. And if you want to point of example, you know, in the recent Polymet situation, even skipping the first part, that was over seven years. So it is, it is years, and again, with multiple agencies. So this is, the only thing that is imminent is asking for the state leases.
Okay. What's a little bit about that process? The State Executive Council, who is that? They're meeting.
Yeah, the State Executive Council is the governor and other statewide elected officials. So the Lieutenant Governor, the Attorney General, Secretary of State, and--
Treasurer, auditor?
I forget the name now. So it's five, it's those five people. By statute, the state leases in the mining area, minerals area, must be approved by the Executive Council. And DNR administers the program, so we submit the application to the DNR. Rick mentioned, we did that a couple of years ago, and we've been working. Essentially, you're negotiating the terms and the like, that's why DNR is, and then DNR brings it forward to the, to the Executive Council, and they've said preliminarily, underline preliminarily, a, you know, it could be as early as February, but there, we're still having conversation about, again, with the local governments and also with DNR staff over lease terms and the like. So it's a bit like everything in this process, it's a bit soft, so we're, we want to be as clear as we can, but we don't want to leave you wondering what happened. So is that, is that sufficient about that process? I can fill in more.
So you don't know whether or not the State Executive Committee will take this up in February or not?
We do not know with certainty. We're getting a, you know, if DNR had its druthers and everything fell into place, I think that's when they would like to do that, but there's also, other things also get on the schedule in the, in the Executive Council, and we do not control that, so sometimes they, and February is the middle of the legislative session, and so, stuff happens, if you know what I mean.
Yeah, we think we're a very important project, but you know, if they decide to address issues with US Steel, we're kind of an also-ran, you know, it's one of those things.
You won't be on the top of the agenda.
Right, but they have, they most assuredly have said this is when they are targeting to slot it in.
Do we know when they meet, in February?
We've heard the 29th. And again, I'm, we are really not trying to be evasive here. The last time I looked, it had not been calendared yet, so, and that can change. But I suspect it will be set in the next little bit.
As you know that?
As that?
As you know, and that gets nailed down, let me know.
For sure, for sure. We're, and yes, we've been trying to coordinate as clearly as we can with all the local and state entities, but--
That'll matter for our timelines.
Totally appreciate that. We've, I mean, I feel we've, we've tried to be good communicators where we're at, and give people time to decide, and everybody's got their internal processes, but yes. It's a lot of cats, and we don't, to herd, and that's not really, this is a bit beyond what we can do. But yes, Mr. Hoel, for sure.
Any exploration that we would do on any of the properties, we have to apply for permits, just like we do on the private lands, which is managed by the Department of Health. Thus far, we've, we applied in this last round for over 60 drill holes. We only drilled 29. That was due to internal decisions in where we are going with our project, but we had no, no issues or concern with the DNR, or with the Department of Health. And we closed off the holes, and we're continuing to finish up the exploration reclamation. So, you know, we are in compliance with the normal ordinances up in that area, and other than that, we haven't done anything to the properties in that immediate area. We don't intend to. Most of the work that we intend to take on in the next two years will be paper studies, trying to figure out, from the information we have, and at laboratories outside of the immediate area, trying to see if we can make the products we think we need to be able to make, to be in the marketplace. So it's a lot of internal work, and we'll be spending a fair amount of money, just to see if we actually can make a project.
And with that being said, though, as, again, there's, we need the land position, so as we move forward and we start issues about mine design, and having conversations about facility locations, permitting, and all that planning, we need to know where facilities can be located. And, and again, that's, we're not doing anything atypical in organizing the land position first. That's the way these projects get developed.
Anybody else have any?
I'd like to hear from the others first.
The other commissioner?
Pardon me, no, from the mayor of Emily, and I don't know if there's a couple other gentlemen in the audience, people from Crow Wing Power are here, if they want to speak.
Yeah, I have, I have some questions, so once we're all done, if you want to have everybody speak, and then I've got some questions that I've been prepared.
Who do we have online?
Mayor Jones, if you're going to speak, you need to unmute. And then there's one other person online that's not a staff person.
Mr. Chair, while they're figuring that out, maybe you could open it to public comment to anybody who is in attendance today.
Ready for that?
The mayor looks like he's ready to speak.
I'd like to have the electeds speak first and--
Mayor Jones, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you clear. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, good.
You have the floor?
Sure. How you guys doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. We, we've been involved pretty heavily with the whole manganese-- We've been involved pretty heavily with the whole manganese deposit. And where we're at as a council, I don't know completely. I know where the public is at overall when it comes to, if we're talking strictly about lease agreements in Emily here, I know that the public split in half, you know, some, half of, half of the population is for. Having any kind of a potential mine go on, half the population is against. And another half of the population that's against it is against it because there's still some, some, I don't want to say, there's still some confusion between a few of the local parties that are involved. And that'd be Crowing Power and the Carlton Group. And we're trying to, we were trying ad nauseam to iron those differences out. And we had a meeting, in fact, yesterday to do that. I think we got going in the right direction on that. I don't know if that'll all be fixed by February 29th. I know we have more meetings to come. I know that we're going to have a city council meeting to come and discuss this at the end of January here on 31st. See, I'm basically just observing, reporting the meeting today to the rest of the council. And then we're not going to, we're not giving any pro, you know, for or against right now. I know that the biggest pro is that, you know, of course, we could all seem, like see more money towards our local, you know, the county government, the city government, and the school board for sure. But we want to make sure that the right players are involved, that all get along, that can do this and have the community's interests at best heart. And that's where I'm at. Did you get all that?
Yep, yep. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks.
We also have somebody else online there that is just by a number. If you'd like to identify yourself and speak. Or if you're just listening.
Just listening.
Listening.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up to the floor. Anybody who would like to come and approach podium, name for the record, and anything you'd like to speak on the subject?
Commissioners, thank you. My name is Dan Brennan. I'm a resident of Emily, Minnesota, and one of the founders of a local civic group that came up around the time that the original applications for this lease were made, almost three years ago, as was indicated. The group is called the Emily Mine Information Group. And we formed as a result of the presentations that were being made by North Star Manganese, Crowing Power, CMR, Cooperative Mineral Resources, the for-profit arm of Crowing Power that handles the mining interests. And what we were seeing was a very one-sided, they're the proponents of the mine. And so you'd expect that, I'm not casting aspersions. But we thought it was necessary to do our best to inform the debate with a broader amount of information than was coming from, as you'd expect, a proponent. So for the last two and a half, almost three years, we've been going to school on what's being requested here, what it looks like in an area like Emily. One of the things that you just noticed was that there's a reference to the Emily District as opposed to what we really are. This is in the middle of Emily, city limits. It's a mile and a half from my house. I live on Ruth Lake. It's 0.6 miles from Ruth Lake. It's in proximity to a number of other lakes in that area. It's a water-rich environment. One thing that you should know about manganese mining, predominantly into our experience, exclusively done in very arid areas. The other proposed manganese mine in the United States is down in Arizona. It's in the Patagonia Mountains. It's the Hermosa Mine. It's operated by an outfit called South 32, which is the largest manganese mining company in the world. It's an Australian company. And again, another very arid area. And one of the reasons that's important is because you have a very serious problems when this stuff is done with dealing with water, both in terms of the potential for contamination and just its presence and having to remove it. If this is a shaft mine, it goes down 600 to 800 feet, which is where this deposit is. You have an overlay of the aquifer that serves my house, the groundwater that keeps Ruth Lake going. It has no inlet or outlet. The concerns for the community are great. One of the things that was made, one of the representations that originally Crowing or CMR had about this project that made it appealing, I think, to Emily residents, the city council wanted to explore it, was this idea that we had a very distinct and small footprint. You've heard footprint referenced here. That was about 160, 180 acres of private land. And the idea at that time was that you could extract it through a borehole mechanism. And then they attempted that. And depending on who you speak with, that was different degrees of successful or not successful. But the idea was for our, the Brainerd Lakes area, the Emily area, where we're so dependent on recreational economy, where we're dependent on our water. I mean, folks, look around, look what's happening in southern Minnesota. I had some friends up in there like, this is so great to be able to get in a lake and swim. Because in southern Minnesota, lakes are now holding ponds for agricultural waste. It's, what we have here is very special. And this is a serious risk, it just is. And manganese is a very, there was a representation that it's not dangerous as they handed you the piece of manganese. It's a very serious neurotoxin. If you look at the mining industry down in South Africa, and South 32 is the company mining it, and you look at the pervasiveness of, it's called manganism. It's a Parkinson's-like disease. This is a dangerous substance. And released into water, released into air through the process of breaking it free of the ore, of breaking it down into a further processing for sort of like a chemical grade mineral. This is a dangerous thing. But going back to just the lease, the lease was, is this basically almost a five-fold expansion of the area on which this project would sit. And in the heart of downtown Emily, the Emily District referred to Emily back in the day when the district was created, and it isn't what it is now. We are dependent on our recreational and water economy. And anything that happens out there, you always have to weigh the trade-off. Yes, this is a rich deposit by any estimation. If able to be mined in that area, in that proximity to all of the houses. And keep in mind, these are people who have invested their whole livelihoods. In our house on the lake, we've invested heavily in it. You, is a mine compatible with that? Will there be an exodus? I've been approached about if this is going to be a thousand acre mine project with manganese as its goal, then I've certainly heard enough people saying, when is it time to go? I don't think that's what's going on here. But the appeal of this as a small footprint, extractable through a unique means that doesn't have the holding ponds and the dump piles. And that's what we're talking about here, is a big area around the principal deposit where you're going to have layout, you know, you're going to have, it's a zone to drop the waste from the mine and to hold the water that's necessarily going to have to be pumped out of it until it can be treated and put back in. Those are all, represent a huge expansion. So what we're saying is, until that process, that project can be better defined for us and be, sort of give us the opportunity to know what road we're walking down. You'll hear, this is just the start, later on is all the heavy lifting. It's incremental, right? Now we've got 800 acres, now we've got, we've invested $10 million. Well, now we're into it for 20, and you're going to tell us now? That that decision gets harder and harder. But for the purpose of the leases, what I would say is this. They, North Star Manganese has been negotiating with the DNR for three years. And the DNR has not recommended those leases to the exec council at this time. After three and a half years, you've seen a 20, 30-minute presentation with the expectation or the hope that at the end of it, you will be in favor. My question is, how on earth could we possibly be in favor or against at this point? It's, we don't have enough information, the DNR doesn't have enough information to have recommended it. These leases, as I understand it, from people who know better than me, these lease applications generally go through rather quickly. Quite quickly, and certainly they don't usually take three years. So there's something going that, whether it be the relationships about, around ownership, whether it be the relationships about exactly how this thing would be ultimately done, what the shares would be, how much would come out of the ground, and the royalties that would be appropriate, because they are looking at a project. They have to, for their lease, the statutorily required lease, they have to look at ultimate project to determine what those values are and who takes what out of this project. So when it, when we're presented with this, we can't talk about that because it's not a project yet. It's a very clear project. There's a project that EML pitches to its investors online repeatedly. And it's a known commodity. But when it comes before us, the public, then it's, oh, we can't really say right now. So what I would say is, there's a reason why the DNR after three years has still not recommended this lease. After 30 minutes and of a presentation, I would hope that we would hold off, that the commissioners would hold off until such time as there's better information. All of the community has had a chance to weigh in. Yes, there was a comment period at the very beginning of the application process. I requested those results, those comments through the Minnesota Data Practices Act. They were overwhelmingly negative. And so one presentation by an interested party in favor, obviously, of this does not, I believe, supply you with good grounds for making a decision at this time. And therefore, I'd ask you to withhold that decision, like the mayor of Emily has done, until such time as they have more information. Thank you very much. If there's questions, I'm happy to answer them, but that's what I had to say.
Do you have any questions on the board?
Thank you all for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Could we respond to a couple of those comments? Could we respond to a couple of those comments?
Um, I would...
We're not having a debate today.
Yeah, I think it's pretty much them making comments to us.
And so we're hearing from you, we're hearing from them, we can sort it through.
I think we're going to have some discussion when we get all, everybody's comments. So I see there's some more people back there, I think, people representing Crowing Power. And I don't know who you are, gentlemen, do you have a comment or anything you'd like to make? Okay, anybody from Crowing Power back there would like to come up and make any comments?
Hi, I'm Shar Kinzer, I'm Public Relations Manager for Crowing Power. I've been with this project and kind of been project manager for quite some time. And so another reason I'm coming before you is I'm retiring in a couple of weeks. And I have all this knowledge and passion for this project, for the communities that we live in. This is merely a step in the right direction, that, a step that needs to be taken in order to strengthen the relationship we have. We have a contractor sort of agreement with North Star Manganese. We are the landowners, we are the owners of the project. We have 25 million invested in it. And we're very excited and proactive about doing this project carefully. And obviously, we live here, we work here, we, our families are here. We hired North Star Manganese after doing many years of research and investing some time in probably, I don't know, five, six different manganese, iron mining companies, people with expertise. And we feel very confident in North Star Manganese, in their environmental review of things and what we can see, how they work. All I can say is that I feel, this is how I see the lease process. I think it's important that North Star Manganese has a bigger footprint to establish that we have owners, they have leasing ownership of the Emily deposit as a whole, not just the small little 180 acres. Because we need investors to take a look at the project and to say, this is a strong company that has the ability. US Steel can't come in here and take the leases around this little 180 acres. I think that this company needs the strength of having the control over the entire deposit. And that's how I see it, is that you don't want a US Steel or somebody else taking the parking lots around you. You need to have that solid leasehold. And so Crowing Power and Cooperative Mineral Resources has a vested interest in this for the future of the school districts, the county, and everybody, all of the Crowing Power members. And this is mainly just a leasing process. It's not about the project, it's not about how are they going to mine it? All that will come down the pike and it can be shut down at any point in time if the process isn't environmentally friendly, if the process won't protect the lakes and those sorts of things. So this is just a lease to say, yep, you've got a project, this is step B. Now you can go to further defining the project. That's all. Thanks.
Shar?
Yes.
Are you speaking for Crowing Power and its members? Are you speaking for CMR? Who is, I get a little confused because I've tried to read through some of this. And I think, is this the first time, if I'm familiar, that it's ever been in front of the board? Okay, so this is kind of new for, I think, even the board members up here, so.
Sure.
I just want to get those things kind of clear.
Sure. Over the years, I initially have worked with Kirk, had worked with Kirk Titus a little bit, just to make sure that they were aware of what was going on. And we had some trumps through the woods area up there so that he was familiar with what we were doing with our land and those sorts of things. But a lot of things have happened over the years. I would say that I speak for Cooperative Mineral Resources. We have a holding company that, Crowing Power has a holding company that retained some of the funding from a major sale of Hunt Technologies, where 12 million was returned to our members when we sold that in 2007. This is the type of thing Crowing Power wants to look out for its members. We have 40,000 people in the area. We have to take care of. So I would speak for Cooperative Mineral Resources in this post because Cooperative Mineral Resources has hired North Star Manganese. But the overall seeing organization is Crowing Power.
Okay. Just a question, I didn't know, I get a little confused.
Right, we had no reason to really come before you other than just to work with your department heads on what we've been doing in the past. And I would speak to Mr. Brennan's concern about why hasn't the DNR done anything in the three years' time? Why hasn't this gone to the executive committee? Well, I would, I would say that COVID, through wrenches in so many things, I would say Polymet and Twin Metals, bigger projects than ours that have environmental concerns, have been weighed heavily on the DNR. We have no sulfides in our project. So it's not the copper nickel problems of water that Polymet and Twin Metals has sulfides. So that's another reason why I'm a big cheerleader for this project. Because ultimately, if it gets mined, there'll be no sulfites to get in the wastewater.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Do anybody on the board or have a question? Okay.
In the future, we certainly could come and give you updates all the way through. Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else who would like to speak that hasn't? Commissioners, do you have any questions or you want to do some discussion on this?
Mr. Chair, first of all, I want to thank you for the update, we appreciate it. I haven't, excuse me, heard very much about it, and so it's very enlightening to hear it. I appreciated the other side's view and what they presented in this situation, and I fully understand that. understand that. I think that for me, I need to hear more from the public, you know, and this is the first time it comes before us. I can't make a decision at this point without hearing from the public, so I think we're gonna have to ask the public. I hope the board will support that for more information or their positions on this particular project. One of the things I've always said as a commissioner is that Crowing County is blessed with its environmental resources that we have here. And so one of the concerns I have is the mining process and that, and I know we're not talking about that exactly today, but I have a huge issue with that. If we don't have our lakes where we can swim in them, to this gentleman's point, if we have forests that get ruined because of whatever happens, we have nothing in this county. We are totally dependent on the tourism business. And mining, as much as we all like that, with good paying jobs. Sorry, I'll get on the mic. It's a 20-year project. Once you mine it, you're gone, but our, whatever the residual impacts are to our environment are there forever, and that concerns me. And, and I find that I have a difficult time supporting projects like this unless there's some overwhelming information you can bring to me that would change my mind. I am all about that, I've always described Crowing County as the Central Park of Minnesota, maybe even the Central Park of Central, United States of America, and I'm not gonna back away from that. People come here to vacation here because of our natural resources, not because of a mine that we have here. And I, I don't know how we could justify to the public that we gave up our natural resources for a 20-year, 25-year project. The other thing, and this is the most uncomfortable one, is that we've had issues in transparency with Crowing Power, and the, the purchases, the leases, whatever goes on, and until there's full transparency by Crowing Power to myself, if not the entire board, I am not willing to back this project. And that's where I sit at this point.
Did you have anything else, Mary, to ask questions or comments?
No, I've just gone back and read a lot of articles that were in the paper previously about this, and.
Okay.
I've got some opinions.
Okay. Doug?
On one of your maps there of the, of the property that you.
Lease property.
Yeah, what, where, where the closest neighbors and like proximities to the maves, do we know that, or have you heard from us people at all in this process?
The closest neighbor right now is, there is a property owner in this upper corner here.
Okay.
Then you have people up in the lakes right in here. This is County Road 6, and there are homes all along in here, and there are property owners down in here.
So, so the question, I believe this is underground mining.
Yes, sir.
What, and again, I'm no miner, but what, in your experience, has there been environmental issues with underground mining, as far as the water qualities, the?
Well, first off, we could not, would not, yeah, would not, but could not, apply for appropriate permits unless we had those items addressed and solved.
And do you have those addressed?
We haven't studied, we, no, we have not studied them yet, because we're still trying to figure out if there is sufficient reason to keep spending money to go down that route. In fact, right now, while we have completed this first round of exploration, most of our money at the moment is being spent in metallurgy, trying to figure out, we know there's manganese in that rock, can we make a final product? And what are these, what are the residual materials that we get out of the rock, and how do they have to be treated? So we're actually spending money, let's see, it's only 10 o'clock here, the labs are, that we're using is in Vancouver, so it's only, yeah, they're already running today again, testing and trying to figure out those answers. We don't have answers to all of those questions. Those are questions that are high on our list, we have hundreds of them, maybe approaching a thousand questions that we need to answer. Many of them we can't answer both logically and engineeringly until we start to finish up with some of this other material. So your question is very valid, so I don't know what the answer is today, except we cannot proceed with a project without a correct answer and a way to solve those issues. And, and we wouldn't put in a permit, nor would the state allow us to get a permit.
Uh, but, but your ask of us would be for support to continue, but we, we don't have those answers to make a.
Let me respond, please, let me respond.
A decision.
Doug, I can't hear you, you've got your microphone shut off.
Sorry, sorry. Did you catch that, Paul, or?
No, I did not hear what you said.
My, my, my comment was that you're asking for the support from, from the board and, and the city of Emily, but yet the exploration and environmental part of this is two, two, three years out?
Yeah, may I respond, Commissioner?
Yeah.
These, so first of all, these are, like Rick, I work exclusively in the mining part, and this is the difficult part of the process, because it is a very serious stepwise, long-term project to develop. And the questions that you raise, Commissioner Barrows, thank you for the courtesy of the direct, and the, the comments by, I'm sorry, I forget your name, your last name, Dan. Brennan, Mr. Brennan, these are all very important and legitimate questions that should be asked. Underground mines have safely occurred around the world without negatively impacting resources. So conceptually, we know that it can be done, but to be transparent and honest with you, we can't say specifically, contrary to what Mr. Brennan said, we don't have a mine design. We are telling you that directly. We are, when we have a design and we start to study, we have to prove beyond any doubt that there, that the environment will be protected, homeowners will be protected, miners will be protected, what we're saying, but you have to, you have to, though, you have to get through the starting gate to get to those questions. And the starting gate is assembling the land. We cannot explore on the state's land without having their leases. We cannot have the buffers so that we're not immediately next to people's property without having the state leases. That's why, and, and this is not a new question, this is a question that DNR faces every time, every local community, every county, every, nobody is going to allow mining anywhere if you cannot protect the environment. That's why the process takes all these years. And so we are simply saying, we, we're asking your support for the first step for the leases, not the mining project, because it would be unfair and unreasonable to ask you that, because we can't answer those questions. But your questions are spot on. And then, if I could address one other thing by Commissioner Barrows, because, and it's not here today, but it is a, we are well aware that there is concern in the city, community, now we've heard it from the commissioner, about transparency with Crowing Power. Contrary to what, we appreciate the support we have from Crowing Power, and we are, we have an agreement, but, and Shar Kinzer cares deeply about the project, and we like Shar. But Crowing Power did not hire North Star Manganese. We have an agreement with them under which we have exclusive rights to develop the project. We make the decisions. We do not work for Crowing Power, and Ms. Kinzer did not mean to mislead, that's a colloquial, colloquial phrase, but it causes confusion, and we are, will appreciate any guidance we can get how to, for us to be transparent and to address those concerns, because we, we are not Crowing Power, we are independent of Crowing Power, we have nothing to do with Crowing Power, we've leased their lands and we will pay them rent, et cetera. Anything we can do to help address those concerns, we are willing to do. We have found them to be good trading partners, but we are, we hear that and are a bit at a loss to how to deal with that, and look forward to your guidance and to be as transparent as we can, and I don't know what else we can say about that. It's a valuable resource. Ultimately, this is critical to the green technology, you have to have mining to get there, but you can't do it anywhere, anywhere in Minnesota, the United States, unless you can show that you are protecting the environment and the natural resources, and you, you have social license and community people trust you. But that's why it takes so many years. I don't know what else to say to you in particular, because we share that concern, but you don't know us, but your concerns are everybody's concerns, Commissioner Barrows. It is a fair and important and critical point. We're asking to get to the starting gate, and we're asking for your support, not today, you're not voting today, we get that. And we will, we are always open to talking to Mr. Brennan, who is polite and professional, who we greatly appreciate the concerns he's raised and the way he communicates them.
I mean, we have, we have made certain decisions on the project. Logic told us very evidently, we want to look at this from an underground operation, not an open pit. We knew that before we went in, but we've actually spent engineering dollars now to say, well, actually, the engineers told us we were out of our minds even asking the question, but we asked the question because we need to get the official engineering opinions. This makes no sense any other way to look at this. So we've done that, we, we did some simple ones like that. Another simple one that we've done, and we, we don't know how far it will go, but one of the simple things, we are convinced that if we can make chemical products for the battery industry, it will not be in Emily, absolutely unequivocally. The idea is to extract the basic material and move it offsite to an industrial facility, which is much more akin to one of these operations like you might see in Hibbing or Iron Mountain, or some, or maybe even Duluth, something, somewhere in the industrial facility. We, we fully respect, and again, Commissioner Barrow, we fully respect your opinion as well on that. I enjoy the environment, I love it. I'm an environmentalist and a miner. The two are not out of, you know, coordination with each other, they are, they are matched up, which forces me to do things better than maybe if I were in the Congo or in China or someplace else. So our objective actually meet, you know, i- is to the same end, but the questions are, we have a lot of questions, and if we can't get to the starting gate, we can't even ask the questions. And that's literally what we're asking for at this time, is your future support, to allow us to get to that starting gate, to be able to ask those appropriate questions. If, for example, the land isn't, is not approved, and we don't get it from the state, then we are going to be forced to be thinking about something on a much tighter footprint, and to be candid with you, it's probably going to make the situation tougher, not only for us, but even some of the people in the community. By, by having a bigger, broader area with better buffer and areas to, to work with, you know, it drops sound, it drops sight, it drops light pollution, it drops everything if a project proceeds. And again, it's always if a project proceeds. And I, I do realize that as a junior company on the exchanges, we have to tell investors that we have something exciting, because otherwise we can't get investment money. But the reality is, we do not have a project.
So, Tim, maybe you can help me with this, but if, if and when the board would be prepared to, to support or not support the project, we, we could limit it to leases and not, not support for the whole project, but we could, we could state what.
I would suggest that it is premature for anybody, anybody.
Absolutely.
To say they support the project today. And in fact, the DNR's exact words is, we aren't, we are not advocating a project, we are not supporting a project, we are not even beginning to promote a project. Their words are, that we understand that you're applying for mineral leases, we do that all the time, and, and to date, we have their support for the approach that we've taken. We haven't gotten their final support yet, but.
And to be crystal clear, we are not asking for support for a project which we don't have, it would be unfair and ridiculous, to be blunt, so we are, please be, we expect, if you support our lease application, we would certainly not be surprised that you explicitly said you were, were not making any decisions about a project, that, that would be the only prudent thing to say.
Only premature to do so.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, thank you.
You keep talking about the DNR. Do you have?
Can you, you need to turn your mic on and speak into it, please.
You keep talking about the DNR, do you have a name of the person that you're dealing with at the DNR, or?
Come on. It goes all over the place.
Yes. Yeah, we do, we have people up and down, and, and I know that the DNR has reached out to the, to the county, I believe, so I believe Mr. Hul has specific names.
Okay, I've got my information.
I don't want to put, yeah, I don't want to put words in his mouth as he's sitting here, but yes.
Probably 95% of our time with the DNR is with the staffers, and it's because much of the time we've spent with them is, you know, educating them on what we're planning on doing, and going through the detail of negotiating the terms of leases, because these are not, it's not a Walmart thing where you come in and buy it off the shelf or pick it up. You have to negotiate the terms. One of the problems with this project is that we have both iron and manganese, and we spent a year, almost a year and a half in negotiations with the state to determine, are we iron, are we manganese? And we ended up in the end applying under both, because they don't have a mechanism for a deposit that happens to have both. So we've actually had to apply initially under a dual lease, because the system, we're the only state in the United States that separates iron out from all other minerals. So it became a difficult process. I mean, some of these things took time for lots of good reasons, I mean.
Right, we've, we've not been critical of DNR in the time.
No.
There are, there are good reasons, I appreciate the comments again made, that it's a long time, but yeah, we've been, and then we've produced information, it's time consuming, but I think your question's a different one, and Mr. Hul has that, the answer to that.
Um, I haven't heard, or we haven't heard yet from Commissioner Coring. Would you like to jump right in here, Paul?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I've got no comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. I have some things that I've, since this came about, and, and, I mean, I don't really, I had to figure out what's the difference between manganese and magnesium. Okay, so I'm kind of starting right at the ground, ground, and I, and I guess it's never been in front of the board before, and it's never been, I've read about stuff in the paper, so I've been doing some homework, so I have some questions, if, if you can ask. And one of it is, you know, if you're looking at, right now, getting the leases in order to look at a project, you've kind of have a thing in your head, thinking there's gonna be this much manganese in that, in that property, is, what kind of grades have you're seeing right now? I mean, is it, how high of a grade is it, or how much process has to go into the manganese to make it a marketable grade?
Uh, to, to answer that, we do go, I'll start at the lowest end, which is almost nonexistent, and we'll get up to, you know, a couple of small percentage points, and at that point, the geologists will start to report the manganese with the iron or the other materials. At the high end, the material that we have been able to separate and sample, and in some cases like in this, this one was running 44% manganese by weight. We do have a couple of samples that actually broke 50% by weight. The average over the entire area that we have drilled to date probably is in the plus or minus 15% range, with about a plus or minus 22, 23% iron range, and the rest mostly silica. So we're probably in that mid-teens to high teens is what we would be thinking about, and if we're lucky, we hit more high grade than low grade, it's just.
In, in the United States, as, as the gentleman over there alluded to, there's other places that have manganese deposits in the United States. Is this one of the higher, what are those? Are they down in the low percentages, and they have to do a lot of processing to get into a, a marketable grade?
Ye- yes, sir. The, this, according to what we've been able The, this, according to what we've been able to find and from some of our potential future competitors, like Broken Hill Proprietary Mining out of Australia, which spun off the other company that he mentioned. We have the highest grade manganese on this deposit north of the equator, to begin with. The average grade in the United States runs about 2%.
Okay.
There is one project that is actually being considered for development that has an average grade of 0.6%. The one that is down in Arizona is part of a copper and zinc operation that if they put it in, would be combined with the copper zinc, and without the copper or the zinc, the manganese is uneconomic in that deposit. It is a big deposit, but it has to be mined in conjunction with the other two metals.
Cost-effective.
Yeah, it's a, it's a co-metal, not a primary. So this would be a primary. We are still trying to actually figure out if we can make any use out of the iron, or if the iron becomes a waste product. The silica most likely becomes waste. But it is, it's unique in that sense. There are very few deposits of this grade and quality globally, higher than anything that the Chinese are mining today. Some of the African deposits, which are the largest in the world, they do have some grades that are this high, but they are not making battery-grade material. They're primarily going into the steel industry, which is where most of the Cayuna manganese, which, by the way, the Cayuna at one time was the large, this region right in here, a few miles away, largest exporter of manganese from the United States for close to 50 years, in an association with the iron mines, both surface and underground, just a few miles away from here. But they stopped the operations in those in, in the 60s, and with that, the manganese production stopped, and then the U.S. became a net importer. So it is a higher-grade deposit. We, we would look to be, in theory, and again, we don't know yet because we haven't drilled it all out, but in theory, we would be looking to do more than 20 years, possibly 40 years, maybe 50 years, a long-term project. If, if it holds, we don't know that yet. We've only drilled out maybe 30 or 40% of the known area. The reason we have an advantage of knowing that the actual mineralization is a small footprint is that U.S. Steel planned a mine on this property in 19, in the 19, late 1940s and early 1950s, and went to actually design out an entire mine plan for this operation. We got lucky, that's probably about the best way we can put it. We found, to use a four-year-old's term, we found the pirate's map with all of the X's on it that showed us where the treasure was that U.S. Steel drilled and plotted out. And subsequent, subsequently, we currently control probably 95% of that in our current land holdings. So the reason, again, we're looking for the state lands as buffer lands, not really exploration lands. We already know where the thing is, and we have slow, we are slowly drilling it out. The difference is, is we were, we're not planning on doing a big open pit, and we're not planning on using the iron to make steel, because it's got too much manganese. We're looking at it just for a new product. So I don't mean to be terribly winded about this, but we know it's a small deposit, and it's a small area, so we are, that's what we're concentrating on. And, and again, I don't, we, we did a measurement at one point of the Emily size target that we have, of the two, just took the two square miles. We are, I think, something like 137th of the size of the taconite operation that U.S. Steel has. I mean, we're about the size of their parking lot.
Yeah, that's when I was, you know, kind of equating that, the only thing I can equate to, I think, in Crow Wing County, you know, we do mine in Crow Wing County. They're called gravel pits.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, for, you know, again, they cover a lot of area and they do, you know, a lot of things, but we don't see a, a product like this in it, you know, I mean, but we build a lot of roads on it. When I look at what they've done in the, in the taconite industry up there, in the iron industry, once they ran out of the high-grade ore, they had to figure out a way of, with everything they had in place, all the infrastructure they had in place, what else can we do there? And they came up with a process then to, to take and, and take low-grade ore and, and extract the iron out of it and turn it into nice little balls, and we ship it all over the, well, all over the world to get it smelted in iron. In this project here, I'm thinking about, is it, it's a limited, like, like Commissioner Barrows, you know, there's only so much here that's mineable, economically mineable, and feasible at this time. Do we know if there's, once you're done with that, then the mine is done?
To our knowledge, to date, that would be the logic that we would have, but, you know, I have no idea what might be found later, or if there is a way to go after the much lower-grade material. I mean, we are, in our process that we're looking at, we're hoping our process might be able to be applied to even some of the scram piles that are here in the Cayuna, you know, down, down near Crosby or Ironton, and some of the old mining piles, if they are high enough manganese to be able to take material that's off the surface there. But we don't know if that will work. So we're focusing on the deposit that we have today. I mean, we have a lot of ideas, you know, like everybody. We'd love to look at lots of different things. But this deposit at the Emily area is unique in its grade and consistency that we've seen to date. It's still very small. I mean, it is still very small.
So as far as the benefits to, you know, and I think, because I believe this county, you know, the economic events in county right now is, is, is what we have here right now, and it's, and it's pretty much fueled by water. And, and I don't know, I had, didn't do enough homework, haven't had enough time to do enough homework to find out, are there other mining operations of this, whether it be manganese or some other mineral, that is mined in a highly water-table area, and how well does that come out? What is the residual effect of, of the water table? Because looking at your structures and stuff, you almost have to go down through 150, 200 feet of dirt in order to get to the, to the mineral at this point in time.
That is correct.
You know, and you're going through aquifers as you go down there to get to that, and then you've got to figure out, I don't know, I mean, I'd like to see how you actually extract it out of the ground and get it up that hole and get it out without affecting everything else on your way up or way down. And, and that's something that, that concerns me, and I think concerns a lot of people. You know, if it was just, you're able to go down there and, and grab it all out and say, here you go, let's ship it, and, and everything's sealed up, I don't think anybody's going to have a problem with that. But I don't, I don't understand it enough yet. And, and I don't have enough information myself to, to sit there and say, yeah, go ahead or not go ahead at this time. For me, this is so new, I need to have a little more research, a little more homework on it, on, from both sides of it. That's, that's from my paradigm.
And, and though, you are, again, working your way into very sophisticated and complex questions of hydrogeology and geophysics and whatnot, all of which are heavily regulated, subject to the permitting, all of which has to be, will be presented to the state agencies, federal agencies, local government, the public, everybody will have a chance to look at that if, when, if and when we've reached that stage. So again, this is, imagine yourself on our side of the table, not wanting to be evasive, acknowledging your concern and saying, all of that is in front of us, we are just at the land package stage, because we could not tell you anything other than that kind of, that those activities are done around the world safely. Each one is designed differently on local conditions, which we have to complete our study of, submit our permits on, and go through years of process. So I will, I will keep, each time I appear in front of you, I will acknowledge, these are great questions that we will have to answer, but we need to move forward. At this point, we need to assemble the land package. It's a step-wise process to allow the development and to protect the public, so.
It's a, it's a, I do not have enough information to make a, to make a recommendation at this point in time. I, I would look back and say, back when U.S. Steel looked at this and, and said, we really don't have a use for this product right now, we know it's high-grade. If they would have said we had a use for it, would they have shaft-mined it, or back then, would they have just moved the overburn and gone right after it as hard rock?
Well, actually, they were planning on not only moving the overburn, but piling it up in Ruth Lake.
Piling what?
Piling part of it up into Ruth Lake.
Oh, okay. And back then, they probably could have done that.
And probably could have done it. We, we looked at those, and, yeah, we, we've seen the U.S. Steel plans, and it's kind of eye-opening.
Please don't propose that today.
Yeah, jaw-dropping.
This is not a proposal. Rick, Rick loves to tell that story, and every time he does, I want to kick him, because there is nothing about that being planned here.
But I mean, I think that's, that's with a lot of stuff. You know, we, we've come through a period of time where we, you know, what, what we've been granted here, I mean, that, that, that manganese has been in the ground for thousands of years, if not millions of years, you know? And we have known as a, as a race, have known to be able to go and say, hey, we want all those trees, and we're going to come off right now and, and haul them and get them shipped, and we'll worry about the other stuff later. Well, I think we've finally come to a point in our lives where we're saying, you know what? We need to worry about the other stuff later first.
Agreed.
And I think that's, that's why maybe you'll see us a little cautious up here, because this is where people come to play. This is, God's granted us with some phenomenal natural resources in here, and I think our jobs as, as people are to do everything we can with what He's granted us.
And we completely.
For the benefit of, of us, for the benefit of the future generations that are here. So that's, that's pretty much all I have to say on the matter.
And, and again, we, that's why we're here, for the dialogue, and we respect your position in that regard.
But Greg is correct. There are, there are a number of mines worldwide, underground, that people do go through wet zones, including some under lakes or rivers, are even, there's a few that go out, I know one in Newfoundland that goes seven miles into the Atlantic and down, and they don't have any issues. But the engineering was intense and took years to come up with the right answer. And the, and the answer is to come up with the right answer. And we don't, we haven't, we have it on our question list, because we do know, we have anywhere from 150 to 200 feet of outwash and till, and parts of it are wet, and locals, that's where they draw their water from. We know we can't touch it. We know that from an environmental point of view, we know it from an engineering point of view. We also know it from a safety point of view, because the biggest issue on our side, and taking the reverse position, is if we're underground and we've got water coming down, we face the issue of dead miners. And that's another thing.
Right.
That we are highly concerned with. So it's, it's across the board on, on all of that.
You know, I, I look at, you know, the grade of the ore, you know, in order for the cost to, to get it out, and still return in invest, you know, return on an investment, you know, I mean, that's, that's got to be the really, for you guys, that's got to be a heck of a number to look at, to balance that all out.
And it, and it, it's actually very difficult at this, at this time, because we have to not estimate, but guesstimate what a mining cost would be, to guesstimate what the processing cost would be. I mean, we can, we can see what the products are being sold for.
Today.
On Google, you know, two minutes on Google and you get an answer. But we have to guesstimate that to, as we progress. And I've been with projects where people have gone through five or seven years of engineering studies and analysis, and you finally get there and say, now we have the numbers, and you go, we can't make it.
No, no. Until, until the product cost goes up, you know, just like when they looked at the oil shale, that type of thing, you know, it was there, it's been there for thousands of years. But, but until that price comes up, it's not economical to mine it. It sits there as a reserve until it becomes economically to mine, or the market becomes high enough to be able to get it out of there and still make a return on your investment.
Right.
So I'm pretty much done with what I had for today. I don't know, is anybody else here who got anything else they'd like to add?
Nope.
Okay.
You'll keep me posted on when the executive council's going to meet?
We will let you know as soon as we find out. Absolutely.
And, and thank you so much for all the time and, and your, and all of the hard questions, so.
We appreciate it very much.
Thank you for coming.
Time, time well invested.
If nothing else, I would, we have to do this as a regular adjourned roll call, or do it just, I adjourn the county, the whole meeting today?
Adjourned, or you can take a motion, your preference.
Thank you all.
Do we want a motion? No, you don't want a motion. Okay, fine. Will, Will a board says no, we're done.